The December 8, 2020 reorganization meeting of the Carlington School District Board of Directors is called to order. Leading off of the pledge, Director Apple, would you lead us in the pledge? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Director Apple?
Here.
Director Frank? Director Honsar?
Here.
Director Mendoza?
Be here this evening?
Director O'Brien?
Here.
Director Pushkar?
Yes.
Director Simsek?
Here.
Director Zalinski?
Here.
Director Schreiber?
Here. Now it's time for our reorganization meeting and I will stop talking. I would like to nominate Chris Simsek as temporary president for purposes of reorganization. Second that nomination. If there's no other nominations, we should move to close nominations?
So moved. But FYI, we cannot hear on the computer again. We can't hear anything that's going on.
We can only hear Jim and Leanne.
Occasionally.
Thank you. We'll try to do better with the microphones. Are there any other nominations for temporary president? If not, then I move to close nominations for temporary president. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. All those in favor of closing nominations for temporary president, say aye.
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 Oppose nay? The nominations are closed for temporary president. Would somebody like to make a motion to vote on? Doc, Director Simsek? Correct.
I think we closed nominations, like there aren't any more nominations and now you have to move to...
So I, I'd like to vote for Director Simsek as temporary president of the Carlington School Board. Is there a second?
Second.
I believe we need a roll call vote. Secretary, can you call roll?
Director Apple?
Yes.
Director Frank?
Yes.
Director Honsar?
Yes.
Director O'Brien?
Yes.
Director Pushkar?
Yes.
Director Simsek?
Yes.
Director Schreiber?
Yes.
Director Zalinski?
Yes.
Alright, congratulations, temporary president, Simsek.
Oh, thank you. With my newfound power, I'll call for a motion for new president for the 2021 year. Does anybody have a motion for a new president for 2021?
I nominate Jim Schreiber as president.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to close the nominations for president.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion approved. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve Jim Schreiber as board president for 2021. Can anyone give me a motion for Jim as president?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and we'll have to take a roll call vote for Jim as president. So Michelle, can you please?
Director Apple?
Yes.
Director Frank?
Yes.
Director Honsar?
Yes.
Director O'Brien?
Yes.
Director Pushkar?
Yes.
Yes.
Director Schreiber?
Yes.
Director Zalinski?
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved. Jim?
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. And thank you, Chris. Now looking to entertain motions for vice presidents. Would anybody like to nominate someone for the role of vice president?
I nominate Joe Apple.
I second that nomination. Are there any other nominations for vice president? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close nominations for vice president.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose nay? Motion carries. The nominations are closed for vice president. I'll entertain a motion to appoint or elect Joe Apple as vice president of the school board for 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Secretary, will you please call a roll call vote?
Director Apple?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Director Honsar?
Yes.
Director O'Brien?
Yes.
Director Pushkar?
Yes.
Yes.
Director Schreiber?
Yes.
Director Zalinski?
Yes.
Excellent. Congratulations, Director Apple.
Jim, since Michelle is a big part of this meeting, could you ask her to put up the volume on her audio, please?
Yes, thank you, George. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, we have all of our committee appointments for 2021. And we did talk about this briefly at our last meeting, so I believe we know who is willing and able to serve next year. I'll entertain a motion to approve Director Simsek as our legislative and PSBA rep for a term of one year beginning December 2020. Do I have a motion for that item?
So moved. So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you very much. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose nay? Motion carries. Congratulations, Director Simsek.
Oh, thank you.
Next item, Pathfinder. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Director Honsar as a school district representative for the South Central Area Special Schools Committee, Pathfinder, and Director Pushkar as the alternative representative for a term of one year beginning December 2020. I have a motion for that item.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose nay? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, Shazda. I'll entertain a motion to approve Director Zalinski as the school district representative for the South Hills Area School District Association, Shazda, and Director Mendoza as the alternate for a term of one year beginning December 2020. I have a motion for that item.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose nay? Motion carries. Congratulations, Director Zalinski and Director Mendoza. Next item, Parkway West. I'll entertain a motion to approve Director Apple as the school district representative of the Parkway West Career and Technical Center Joint Committee, and Director Honsar and Director Zalinski as the alternates for a term of one year beginning December 2020. Do I have a motion for that item?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose nay? Motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations, Director Apple, Director Honsar, and Director Zalinski. Next, foundation liaison. I'll entertain a motion to approve Director Simsek as the Carlington Federation Liaison School District Representative for a term of one year beginning December 2020. Do I have a motion for that item?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose nay? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is the newspaper. I'll entertain a motion to designate the Pittsburgh Post-Gazette as the official newspaper for legal advertising for the Carlington School District and a newspaper of general circulation be used as necessary. I have a motion for that item.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose nay? Motion carries. Thanks. The meeting calendar. I'll entertain a motion to approve the board meeting calendar for the year 2021 as has been submitted. Do I have a motion for that item?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose nay? Motion carries. Thanks. Next one, the solicitor. I'll entertain a motion to reappoint the law offices of Andrews and Price as solicitor, tax counsel, and delinquent tax collector of the Carlington School District for a term of one year beginning January 1, 2021. Do I have a motion for that item?
I saw.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose nay? Motion carries. Bill and your team, thank you very much and congratulations.
Thank you. And just real quickly, I thank the board for their confidence that they've expressed. And we have always enjoyed our working relationship and look forward to continuing at this upcoming years. So thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you. So there's no other items. I believe the next item is for adjournment. So before we adjourn, any other items under the reorg meeting?
I just had one thing to add. I am going to continue on as education foundation liaison, but Director Pushkar has also agreed to attend some of the meetings. She has shown an interest in being part of the foundation as well. So I guess she'll be seconded, I guess.
Thank you to both of you. Any other items for the reorg? If not, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose nay? The reorg meeting is adjourned. The Tuesday, December 8, 2020 voting meeting of the Carlington School District Board of Directors is called to order. Do we need a roll call vote again? Do we need to confirm presence? Michelle? No, okay, thanks. Then I will, I will note that we allow the public, or we invite the public rather, to ask any questions of any agended item. So if there's any members of the audience, either in person or on Zoom or YouTube that wishes to ask a question on an agended item, please make yourself known now. Mr. Jones, do you have anything online? Are we good to go? Good to go. Okay, thank you. Moving along, section two, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the November 17 voting meeting as provided.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Not will vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose nay? Motion carries. Under section three, I'll report that we had an executive session prior to this meeting where we discuss contract negotiations, personnel matters, and general information matters. I will now turn to our superintendent for the superintendent's report.
And thank you, Mr. Schreiber. Just for public notice, at this time, we do have six individuals joining us through YouTube. And at last check, we also had four people joining us via Zoom. Seven people. Twenty-seven people on Zoom. Twenty-seven people on YouTube. And eight people with us on Zoom. So thank you all for joining us remotely, and we do have one person in the audience. For the first administrative report, I would like to invite Mrs. Hoffman to the podium there. She will give an update on pupil services and special education. Mrs. Hoffman.
Hi, can everybody hear me out there on the computer? Okay, thank you. So I want to talk about COVID compensatory services or CCS. Some of you may have not heard of them, so I want to do a quick presentation on them. So what happened was, due to the school closure that occurred, our special education director, Carol Clancy, and her team had come up with COVID compensatory services. Josh, next page, please. So we're going to look at what are they? The COVID compensatory services, guidelines, determination, and what it looks like. Next page. So what are compensatory? What is compensatory education? It's a judicial equitable remedy under the IDEA Act that provides in-kind special education and other related services for denial of FAP or replacement of education services that the student should have received in the first place. Next page. So that is, that is what compensatory services are. This is COVID compensatory services. So this is not a monetary payout to anyone, but what they've come to do, what they've determined to do was look at the services as determined by an IEP team that would need to remedy a student's loss of skill, behavior, or lack of progress as a result of the extended school closure in the spring of 2020. CCS should be considered only after the student receives services to recover the lost skill or behavior or to make progress to the levels determined appropriate prior to the end of the extended school closure. Or, next one, please. So I'm going to ask Josh to blow this up a little bit as I talk, because this is a flow chart and it's a little bit easier if I talk about it and you can visualize it. So what they had us do was, they asked all school districts and charter schools across the state of Pennsylvania to look at this. And they said, what you want to do is you want to compare data. So as soon as instruction restarted, they asked you to resume implementation of each student's IEP at the beginning of the school year. We were in a unique situation where we did not go in person and we did remotely. So sometimes you will see this chart where it says in-person instruction. And I spoke with our solicitor and they advised us to go ahead and start collecting data even though we were remote, because we felt it was very imperative to get the data that we were able to get in the fall. With that said, we were gathering baseline data and we did it from August 31 through September 8. Typically, they wanted us to do a two-week window, but with all the new technology, families struggling to get on, students not understanding how things are going to be, I felt that it was best that we extended the window, not just for two weeks, but through the month of September, so that we had accurate data to look at. Then what they have you do is you're going to compare data from the fall to the data in the spring prior to the school closure. And if there was a gap in there, that's when it was determined that, hey, we need to try to figure out what to do to remediate and recoup those skills. So what we did was, we started instruction and it was remote till the end of October. And those are the recruitment services, if they needed any. If there was regression or failure to make progress, and that was because of the school closure, not because of anything else. We then are reassessing the recruitment services by reviewing data. And the data that they're reviewing is currently going on. And I've had several teachers reach out and ask, if not through November, if they could extend the window a little bit to make sure they had accurate information, because some were still remote, some were in person, and they wanted to make sure they had the most valid data. And also other family members and whatnot were helping the students. So they wanted to make sure that it was as valid as possible. So what they're doing now is they're reviewing the progress for any of the kids that did lose the skill from the spring and into the fall. And so they're currently reviewing that data right now, and they will be reporting out here shortly what that child, either they did make the, they did make it up or they did not. So the next thing that they're going to do is you're looking at a loss, a regression of skills or a loss of previously attained skills. An example would be academic, math, reading, or English, some type of social, emotional, or behavior, communication, gross motor, daily living skills, or executive functioning. The other thing would be lack of progress. Maybe they did not make progress because they did not have access to something in the spring. Well, now they do. Pennsylvania recommends that we go like this. The IEP team should consider the following factors and sources of collecting data while the LEAs were using alternative instructional models during the school closure. We're looking at all levels of academic and functional performance, including levels of performance on all IEP goals prior to the mandatory school closure, and the current level of performance as measured from the baseline data collection. They're also looking at information and observation from teachers, related service providers, parents, caregivers, and any other family members. So it's not just one set of data. You're trying to get the whole IEP team to come in and collect the information. That, the data collected will be through progress monitoring and progress reports. The students, they also look at the student's ability to access remote learning, and this is throughout the state. That's not just specific to our district, but their access to remote learning opportunities, the student's engagement in the learning opportunities while we were closed in the spring. The amount of skill or behavior loss or lack of, lack of progress the student experienced while we were using alternative learning models in the spring. We're looking at historical data as well that we're able to collect on the student's abilities to recoup loss and/or skills or behaviors. We're looking at services provided by the LEAs that were using alternative learning models. And we're also looking at results from informal and formal assessments. Now, what will that look like? That's what the big question is. So case managers will be reaching out to families this month and next month, and they'll be notifying them of the services. And we are looking to provide the services in the summer after ESY. We are told that we are not allowed to offer it at the same, it can't be simultaneous with ESY or extended school year. And we are not allowed to do it during the school day. So that really set limitations on things. I did meet with our administrative team. We talked about some districts are doing it after school hours for tutoring. Others are doing it in the morning before they open up. They're coming early. And we thought it was best that if we did it in the summer after school, after ESY hours at Carnegie, I believe their CASP runs from 8:30 to 11:30, and we're talking about running from 12 to 2 o'clock. So that information will be more forthcoming, but that's where our COVID compensatory services are for Carlington. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Alright, so my understanding is you're still collecting data to try to determine and identify who you need to offer these compensatory services.
Yeah, last I had checked in, there were about 74 students in the district and that were in outside placements as well that had shown regression. Most of the students did not, which was very, which was great and fortunate. But some of them still wanted to make sure they were collecting the data on those kids that had shown regression to see if they made those skills up since they've been back in school, whether it's in person or remote. So I did have a lot of teachers say, we just want to make sure we get this right and provide the services as necessary for the children.
How many total students are you looking at?
Uh, we currently have 249 students that are receiving special educa, what is it, 249? Yeah, they're receiving special education services.
Okay.
But when I checked with them, they had about 74 that had shown regression. And I just told them to try to collect as much data and, you know, communication with the family and the caregiver to see. Because sometimes we don't always see everything, you know, that's going on, so.
Thank you.
So Sarah, that's about 20% of our kids. In other school districts, is it about the same, showing regression?
That's a great question, and I do not know that answer. I haven't had the opportunity to really discuss with other districts. Unfortunately, the state was still building the ship as they were, you know, driving it. So there was a lot of, a lot of commotion over the summer trying to get some of this together, but yeah, I definitely can find out for you next board meeting, how many other districts, what their numbers look like.
With the COVID disruption, I'm surprised that the percentage isn't even higher than that.
Yeah, I was too, but what was good about it is a lot of the kids have shown recruitment of the skills that they have lost. So I had a couple reach out already and say that, you know, A, they didn't, they really regress that much. So again, I'll look over the data. If there is any questions with parents or guardians, you know, we will have an IEP meeting and I'm open for discussion and it's, it's just kind of what you do. So it's not just one person's input. You're going to look and get a lot of different moving parts here in data.
I know it's a tough hill to climb, so thank you so much for the effort that you and your team and the teachers are all putting into, you know, making, making this a good experience for our students.
Thank you. Yes, they're working very hard, so I appreciate them every day. Anything else? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Hoffman. If there's no other questions, we'll move forward. And just a recap there in regard to the amount of work that our special education teachers and Mrs. Hoffman and her department there put through as we transition between models, between face-to-face instruction, moving to remote models. There's a significant amount of paperwork and data gathering and collection that needs to take place in order to satisfy all of our conditions. So that's one of the things that our special ed department has done a fantastic job at, reaching out to parents and also to our parents getting back to us, attending meetings remotely, attending meetings over the phone. A lot of different types of, of work that takes place behind the scenes to to help with our students move through, move through the instruction and get the most that they can. As I move to the superintendent's report, we can move to the next slide, please. Since the last time we met, since our last board meeting, the Department of Health and also the Pennsylvania Department of Education came out with some new guidelines. Some of those new guidelines had to do with facial coverings and that not only had an impact on the schoolhouse, but then also had impacts on the community as well in regard to wearing face masks in, face coverings rather, in, in different areas. Let me first start with, we went through, as a result of some of that update, we went through and we revised our health and safety plans. As you're aware, we have two health and safety plans. One that covers the educational side, then one also that covers the athletics and activities side of things. I'll start with the athletics, health and safety plan. It's revised and on the agenda for tonight's approval. The main aspect that changed with the athletics and activities, health and safety plan had to do with face coverings. And with the order with face coverings, it was a universal mandate while indoors and also while competing, that individuals wear face coverings. And that has a different impact than what it had previously with athletics in regard to, to wearing face coverings. Now it also includes wearing face coverings during competitions as well. So at any time that students are actively working out or even during competition, there are guidelines in place for face coverings. Now the two individual pieces that are pointed out in the new health and safety plan require some exceptions to that rule when students do not need to wear face coverings when engaged in, in athletic activity. And so those two areas where they are not required are in the case where it would cause a medical condition, exacerbate an existing one, including respiratory issues that impede breathing, mental health condition, or a disability. In addition to that, students, athletes would not be required to wear face coverings if the sport or the equipment or the exertion level does not allow for face coverings to be worn safely. And certainly in, in some sports such as swimming, that's very common sense that wearing a facial covering during swimming is not feasible. However, the other athletics that we offer at the present time, both wrestling and basketball, there, we need to be extremely conscientious of the risk that we're putting students in, both that health and safety standpoint in regard to COVID and then also in regard to heavy levels of, of exercise and exertion during the, during the competition or even during practice. And in many cases, it's an individual type of monitoring system where as, as coaches, as athletic directors, as student athletes, we're not completely sure in regard to how wearing that face covering will have an impact on the ability to participate in athletics. So working with Mr. Millsom, our athletic director, and working with our coaches, we did put some pretty clear guidelines out to our coaches and to our student athletes as well in regard to wearing those face coverings during competition and while during practice. So we do have both gaiters and also face masks that are worn. And as heart rates start to approach 120 per minute, that's when health professionals indicate that there is a cause for alarm when wearing a face covering and also competing at the same time. And it's very difficult to, to measure and keep accurate data while students are competing. So we more or less leave that up to individual students that when they notice that they get to a threshold when that exertion level becomes too high for them to wear a mask, then they are permitted to take that mask off or that face covering. And that can be during competition. It could be during strenuous workouts, but we leave it up to the individual student. But we leave it up to the individual student and working very closely with the coaches in order to make those determinations. So it, it's very tricky. I know that P I double A has a meeting tomorrow. And Whipple has also been in touch with us to help us understand and recognize these new changes. The new changes that we've had since, since March of last year, they continue to change. And most recently, they've been changing rapidly. Being able to respond to those types of changes, new orders and new guidelines. It has been a challenge, but we do, we are still committed to creating safe environments for our students to attend school and also safe environments for our students to compete in athletics and also other activities. So as you, as you look through the athletics, health and safety plan, that's the main difference that's being submitted tonight for the revised health and safety plan. As we move to the district health and safety plan, since our last meeting, the state of Pennsylvania, P D E handed out requirements for school districts to complete an attestation form. And as part of that attestation form, there were basically three options. The first option was to not fill out the form and, and to not return it to the state. If school districts did not fill out that form and return it to the state, then basically that indicated to the state that during, when a community is in the substantial level that Allegheny County is currently in, and most of all sixty-seven counties in Pennsylvania are in substantial, that you would not be able to offer face-to-face instruction and you would not be able to offer any clubs or athletics or any types of activities. We did fill out the form. The second option was to offer only remote instruction while the county was in substantial. And then the other option was to try to maximize the amount of face-to-face instruction with students taking in all the precautions into place while the county is in substantial. That is the direction that I recommended to the board to, to move forward with is so that we could maintain our, our doors open to students to learn in a face-to-face environment. And as we signed that attestation form, we were required then to attest that we would follow the face covering order that was directed by the Department of Health. And in that particular case, that was something that was pretty much already built into our health and safety plan and already a part of our procedure. So that was not a big lift for us. However, there are new procedures for moving to remote instruction. And that is all now based on the requirements of collecting data at each of our building levels, which we have been doing that as well. At our last meeting, we indicated that we had a COVID tracker on our website. However, the next slide goes through and distinguishes the difference between when a district needs to move to a remote model. And that is based on the number of positive cases that come up in each of our buildings. What the state did was they made clarifications between the size of buildings. So our elementary schools qualify as small buildings. Our high school qualifies as a medium-sized building. So that's why you'll see different thresholds that are put in place for our two buildings, for, for all three of our buildings, the elementary level and then at the secondary level. What's important to know from, from this form is that it's a rolling fourteen-day window that we need to take a look at and that we look at this window when we resume instruction. So our window would have opened on Monday of this week when we resumed instruction. The model also takes into consideration that it only counts positive cases of students or staff who were physically present for instruction. It does not include numbers of students or staff who are working remotely. So that's a very important thing to recognize that as we look at this form, we look at the district actions, and then we also look at the COVID tracker that we have on our website, because it will be a little confusing. Our, our, currently our, our tracker on the website indicates that we have five active cases. However, all of those cases occurred when students were outside of the building. One of those was a staff member, four were students. Regardless of being outside the window from this past Monday, all of those students were not present in school. So therefore, those students would not be counted towards our numbers. Looking at the numbers, you can see as far as the tracking at our small buildings. If we have one case, if we have between two and four cases, and if we have five plus cases, the state has the rec, not now the recommendations. What we agreed to is that we will follow these recommendations and follow them. So if we have a case at one of our elementary buildings that we will go through, and we will look at our model, we will take a look at our instructional model, see if there's ways that we can decrease the number of students. That's something that is evident in all stages. We'll clean the areas, but there's, at that point, no reason to, to close the building down and move to remote instruction. However, when we meet the threshold of two to four students or five plus in the two to four range, the state asks that we move to a remote model for three to seven days contingent upon the amount of time that it takes us to conduct our contact tracing and also go through and sanitize the building. If we can do it in less time than what is prescribed, then we are able to reopen our, our building and provide face-to-face instruction. That also, once we reopen the building, then that resets the clock of the fourteen days. It will be a challenge for individuals at home to track and really follow what is taking place as far as the decision-making that goes through. But what I can tell you is that we did sign the attestation form. And by signing that, we are committed to, to following these. You can see that in the, at the high school, those thresholds increase a little bit. The one to three, we don't need to move to remote. But as soon as we hit that four to six threshold, then the state says you need to move to a remote model, do the same type of steps, go through the cleaning, move to a remote model for three to seven days. And then when we hit the threshold of, of seven students, then they look at moving to a remote model for a period of fourteen days. There again, there's a, there's an asterix in the language that says if we can move through and we can conduct all of our contact tracing and properly sanitize the building at, at that point, we can come back to a face-to-face model in a shorter period of time. We have been operating in a relatively conservative manner in regard to how we follow the rules. We've been following it very closely. Also with, with quarantine times, we've been sticking very closely to quarantine time. We're very thankful for our families and community members for reporting COVID cases in the community and sharing that information with our school nurses and our principals and with me as well. That has been very helpful. And I think also our families keeping their children at home when they are experiencing symptoms has also been extremely helpful in keeping the, the impact of COVID outside of our building. And nonetheless, it, it, it's in the community. It is spreading as we know at a, at a quick rate. That certainly concerns us, but at this point, we still have not seen any evidence of it, of it spreading in our buildings. And that was the rationale then for, for moving back to, to face-to-face. If we can look at the, the next slide, if we take a look at the current data, as I mentioned, we do have five active cases in the district. That is from one non-instructional staff member and four students. Those four students and the, the non-instructional staff were recorded over the past week or so. So they are still active on the tracker. So on the COVID tracker to the bottom right, you can see the active cases there are five. And you can look at the, at the building levels to see how that, how that transcribes into each of our buildings. Four of those are, are Crafton Elementary. And then one we have here at the, at the junior, senior high school. At the present time, we have twenty-eight students who are in quarantine and we have nine staff members who are in quarantine. You'll notice that those numbers do not directly align to the numbers that are, that are issued on this chart also. The quarantine numbers are updated on a weekly basis. I do that on Fridays and go through our data and check that. So the numbers that I'm presenting to you here tonight, the twenty-eight students and the nine staff members, those are fresh from this afternoon as of four o'clock. Of those nine staff, five are instructional and four are non-instructional. What I will say also is that prior to or after developing this information, we did receive information of another case. And that case did have an impact on our wrestling team. We notified our, the athletic director, Mr. Millsom, notified me this afternoon. Within five minutes of, of notification to me, we shut down the wrestling program. We notified the students. The coaches were, were notified ahead of time. They provided the information to us. We shut down wrestling until further notice and notified the families by phone call from our coaches. And then we will also follow up with those families tomorrow with additional information and some guidance as we interview the, the individual students, individual student who was involved with the COVID case to acquire additional information so we can get families the most accurate information. As always, with positive COVID cases, we keep that information confidential due to the, the health concerns of individual students. When the next page talks about the confirmed case procedure, this has still remained the same as what we have been following in the past. In regard to positive cases, are quarantined for ten days. They can come back after ten days, provided that the remaining seventy-two hours that they are symptom-free without any fever-reducing medication. The only component that has changed in the confirmed case procedure has to do with quarantining and when we reach out to Allegheny County Health Department and talk about close contacts with them and identify individuals who need to quarantine. The CDC recently came out with new guidance on quarantining. A few days later, the Department of Health at, at the Pennsylvania level adopted the same procedures for quarantining, which now changes things. Previously, the quarantine was set at fourteen days. Now there are specific guidelines in place that if individuals get tested, they can come back to work or come back to school at a faster rate than what they previously did. So those guidelines are put in place by the Department of Health. We'll be following those moving forward as opposed to the fourteen-day quarantine. And certainly we provide individuals with that information as we move on. So as you can see with the advancements in, in COVID, the more information that we, that we learn from day to day, this, the, every, a lot of things change. New guidance, the medical field learns more information. What we understand that there is a vaccine that is coming out on its way. However, until it has a, a direct impact on citizens across the United States, it could be a substantial amount of time in getting, getting vaccines for, for staff and for students and for all members of our community will take some time and, and to have an impact. So the next slide talks about the COVID nineteen impact on instruction. Prior to this, when we opened up back in late October, early November, we did not see as, as much a substantial impact of COVID on our staff or with our students. In regard to our staff, I think it's important for, for the board to know and also for our, our community, parents and students to know. As I mentioned, we have several staff members who are in quarantine. We also have several staff members as a natural part of, of the winter months become ill and call off of work. And so in those cases, we need to, to find substitute teachers to fill in. At the present time, substitute teachers are very hard to find. All of Allegheny County and I think all of Pennsylvania struggles to find substitute teachers to fill in. We have been fortunate to get a few substitutes in throughout the course of the year, but there are very few. So as a result, we need to reach out to our teaching staff. And our teaching staff has to go in and, and cover for other teachers during their available time, which could be prep time, could be time that, that they normally spend preparing for, for class. And at the present time, I think that is also compounded. At the present time, as teachers are preparing for classes, they're not preparing for traditional types of classes. They're preparing for classes instructing students in front of them and also preparing for students who are learning from home. It's a different type of model. It's very challenging for our teachers to, to do this on a daily basis and, and to cover those classes and to tend to their normal responsibilities that they, they would tend to. COVID has also had an impact on our students as far as just general attendance. Students who are quarantined, as I mentioned, we have twenty-eight students who are currently quarantined. Therefore, they cannot physically attend school. And as we noticed back in late October, early November, our physical attendance rates of, of students reporting to school, depending on the day, was anywhere between eighty to eighty-five percent as we came back with our instructional model. This week, as we took a look at attendance rates in the building, the numbers were, were much smaller in our buildings today. We were looking at numbers right around fifty percent of students physically reporting to school. So that does have a significant impact on the manner in which we provide our instruction, the manner in which teachers have to prepare for, for classes as well. The other impact that it has on students is, once again, just that, that physical attendance being in the classroom, in some cases not being able to, and then also receiving remote instruction from home and having those, those same services being provided to them. And as far as academic achievement, the biggest impact that, that we have noticed, we've noticed that, that students who are engaged in classroom lessons, those students who physically attend school and those who regularly attend their classes during remote instruction, if they're logging on, if they're engaged in, in the classroom exercises, they're performing well. The, the largest group that we're, we are struggling to reach out to are the students who are either not physically reporting to school, who, who are not logging on to their Google accounts for instruction. Without having students present in school, it restricts us quite a bit with the normal tactics and procedures that we can use to, to re-engage students. When students are physically in class, our teachers are able to redirect students to get them to, to pay attention. Makes it a lot easier. When students are at home and outside of, of the schoolhouse, makes it much more challenging. I know that Mr. Lockren, our, our high school principal, conducted close to forty to fifty home visits along with our homeschool visitor and also our school nurse attended as well on some of those visits. Just to go out, knock on doors of, of students who have not been attending school, who have not been regularly logging on to their Google account and having conversations with both parents and students, encouraging them to continue to, to re-engage, to get back in. Because we recognize that the longer that they stay out of school, the longer that they become disengaged in instruction, the deeper of the impact that that's going to have on regression of, of skills and, and being able to move forward to, to help in, in their future studies. So that, from, from a staffing concern, we're starting to recognize some differences from late October, early November, coming back in here to December and coming back into our instructional model, both from a, from a staff and a, and a student side. That certainly, I think, has, has some concerning aspects to it. Next slide talks about strategies for, for learning at home. This is one that I also covered at our, at our last board meeting. So as, as parents work with their, their, their children at home, the, the main thing there that, that I can stress is that, that, that regular attendance is getting children to, to log on to their accounts, getting as much FaceTime as they can with our teaching and with our staff to help them acquire the skills that they need to be successful in the classroom. And just some other strategies in there for parents is just to be engaged with, with your students as well at home. Talk to them about what they're learning about at school. Talk to them about their homework assignments. Question what types of assessments and tests that they have coming up. Encourage them to, to be with their teachers during office hours when they're, they're presented. And be able to take breaks, take some phys, some physical activity to get things moving and eat healthy. And a lot of all the good things that we try to encourage students to do with lifelong learning skills in, in many of our curricular areas as well. On the following page, it talks about COVID guidance. And that is just more continued guidance that is, we will continue to take a look at, at our instructional models, we'll continue to take a look at the spread of COVID in our community, continue to make educated decisions on how to, to best move forward to provide our students with, with, with education. And once again, up to this point, our model would not be as effective as what it is without the, the help from our families and from our students and from our teachers. I think all the stakeholders and from the board here has been extremely supportive throughout this process. I can't thank anybody enough for everything that they've been doing to make this successful. It's very challenging, but yet I think we are extremely committed to, to doing what's right for our students. And that's across the board. So to our parents and families, please continue to monitor your child's symptoms at home. And if you're doing an outstanding job, as I recognized before, not sending your child to school when they're, they have symptoms, that helps with the spread of COVID. It helps the number of students we have to quarantine. It reduces those numbers significantly. And continue as we move through these holiday seasons to exercise caution. We do recognize that the state, I believe it will be Governor Wolf, will be sharing some more information tomorrow. I'm not sure what time that information is to come out, but they are looking at additional restrictions. Those restrictions could have an impact just on community, just through regular daily life as far as the way we move through it. And it could also have an impact on our instructional model as well. We are unclear as far as what that guidance is going to be that's coming out tomorrow. But please know that we will follow that information very closely. And whatever guidance is provided to us, we will listen to very carefully. And I'll, I'll share with the board in the community if it involves anything that, that has to do with our instructional model as well. So at this time, I'd just like to open it up to, to the board for any discussion in regard to, to the report here this evening.
Thank you, John. That, that's a, that's a lot of information. I know you've been working really, really hard. It is concerning, you know, we're, we're all watching the news and we're, we're all, you know, trying to anticipate what we're going to hear from the governor tomorrow. So I think there are a lot of questions and I think it would be really good for us to take some time to discuss, you know, what our future month or so might look like. you know, what our future month or so might look like. You know, and and keeping in mind the concerns of of different groups and how this would impact, you know, our families. I think, you know, in the summer, when we made the decision to start the year remote, you know, a lot of our rationale was if if we make that decision early on and give people time to prepare, that we thought that was, you know, maybe the most helpful, even if the decision wasn't, you know, what they wanted, maybe they wanted in person, but we weren't able to do that. At least they knew and could prepare. So I'd be like really interested in knowing what our families are feeling at this time as we're seeing the numbers rising. You know, it's concerning and and there are many different aspects of it that I think a lot of people might not consider. I mean, a lot of people are thinking about, you know, this is how it affects my family to have my kid at home or to, you know, send my kid into the classroom, but we also have other populations we need to be considerate of. You know, and our teachers burning out on trying to do two different models of learning is a concern. Because, you know, what what product are they delivering to our students is is one thing. You know, our custodial staff, you know, and how they're maintaining the buildings and how they're able to continue to maintain the buildings if the numbers continue to rise. So I really think, you know, if if we can talk some of this through as a board in this format, you know, I I think it's helped for the for the public to understand and, you know, engage in in what the decision making process is. So, you know, I I do have some questions based upon the information that that you just provided in your presentation. I'm just, you know, I just general things. I'm curious about, you know, if if we decide to continue in this hybrid model, but we're not able to maintain it, is is it better to just make a decision and and just get through the holidays? And possibly just wait until January to come back to try to do face to face? I don't know. I don't know how families are doing it if they have small children and and two parents are working or what, you know, it's a working parent and they have extended family trying to help them, you know, and there's the young children trying to get through a school day. You know, what resources, you know, what can we give them to to help them? So I'll leave it at that. I'll let other people jump in with their questions, but that's that's my thoughts to start.
And I agree. I'm I'm sort of in line with Chris and I think, you know, we all felt very strongly, we needed to get the kids back in the building. The kids wanted to be back in the building. It is difficult for some families to make this work. The virtual model doesn't work for every child. But I also think that we're kind of getting that input from our families right now if 45 to 50% of kids are back compared to 80% or, you know, or earlier on in this process. And what kind of educational product are we giving them now, what appears to be the majority of the kids who are at home? Virtual is not the best end result. It's not what we want. But we also know that the virtual model that we are able to provide, when all of the kids that are at home is better than the virtual model that the kids are getting at home right now, when it is split between classroom and home. So I mean, I think I think we're getting the input from our families right now. If 45 to 50% of the kids are in the building, which means the majority of the kids are at home. And I mean, I have two kids in the district and I wanted them in the buildings and they want to be in the buildings. And and but at the end of the day, is this what we should be doing as we get through this time period? And if more restrictions come out tomorrow, even if they don't involve the schools, how many more families in our district are going to see that have less risk tolerance and pool even more kids? So we've got even more thing at home, getting this split hybrid model. I just, I don't want to flip flop. I was very strongly in favor of of getting the kids back in the building last week. But I think that our parents are kind of talking to us and telling us what the comfort level is, and it is definitely lower than it was. So I I it's, I I don't think it's going to get better in the next two weeks.
I'd like to really praise the parents who are sending their kids to our buildings, but also the parents who are at home trying to help their kids to learn. This has to be a tough time for parents, also a tough time for our teachers and our administrative staff. You're doing a great job, parents and all of you. Thank you. We'll get through this eventually and it'll just be a bad memory. Hopefully.
Has a comment or a thought? Dr. Frank, Dr. Apple, Dr. Zlutske. Dr. Crider, I think that's it.
I have one other recommendation, sorry, that was slightly related to this conversation, but also slightly aside from it. And I agree with what Director O'Brien, Director Simsek of Fed and Director Hanchar. I I'm wondering if there's also a second track that we need to be taking in our conversations that's an advocacy track. And Director Simsek, I'm not sure what your thoughts on this are with PBSA or or PSBA and and some of our advocacy work to see if we can kind of at least lend our voice to the the conversation around teachers being included in the kind of 1B group for vaccination as essential frontline workers. Now, obviously then, you know, teachers can make that decision for themselves. But I think it's a way that we can advocate for our families. We can advocate for our school. We can advocate for our teachers to say we know how valuable they are and how important it is to to make sure that they're protected as we kind of move forward in the conversations about vaccines.
Absolutely. Good point. I agree. You know, I'll definitely take a look into see if PB or PSBA has, you know, anything specific out there that they're trying to advocate for or push and and I'll I'll let everybody know if if that's something that, you know, that we can help with.
So I'll ask if is everybody in agreement with some of the voices we've heard already, or does anybody have a disagreement around seeing attendance numbers dropping below 50%? Is is that telling us something and do we need to heed? Do we need to infer something from that and make adjustments accordingly? Dr. Crider, do we need another survey? I'm sure everybody has survey fatigue to some extent, but do we need to more formally survey our parents and get their feedback again?
Or is it too soon to tell that? I mean, we're only, you know, back one day, two days. So, you know, do we just need to give it, you know, another couple of days to see how things play out or what the governor is is suggesting? I don't know.
Yeah, I I think we we one of the components there is we we wait for the governor to to share any information coming out tomorrow. I think in regard to to survey information, I think one way of surveying is, as you had mentioned, is just taking a look at the number of students who are coming to school. And I think it is combination of of some things why students are, why families are electing to have their kids stay at home at the present time. I think we're right in between two holidays. And I think there were some concern about coming back after Thanksgiving. We did make the decision to take that week after Thanksgiving off. As I reflect on that decision, I think it was a a solid decision based on the information that I had shared previously in regard to having, you know, four students test positive over the break and some even bleeding into last week. So that could have potentially had an impact had those students actually reported to school. Could they have infected other students, other teachers? The impact that that would have on quarantine and that it does have, it has a rippling effect on a lot of different things. It has a rippling effect on on health and it has a rippling effect on education as well. So I do think that the one piece we we look for is 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 for any type of guidance we get tomorrow from Governor Wolf to listen to that, to see if there's any new information for us to take into into consideration. And the other part about being banked in between two holidays is I think other other families are electing to keep children at home just based on being able to have a a stress free holiday with their families, knowing that they can move into the holiday without having any possible exposures from school. And, you know, it on one side, I'll say that we, you know, the exposures at school have been very limited. As I mentioned, we've not recognized any any spread of the virus in the in the schoolhouse. Now that's using the data that we have. It's not to say that it didn't happen. Because in many cases, we with reported cases and students showing symptoms of the illness don't get extremely sick from it, at least from the ones that we've seen so far. They have very mild symptoms that are keeping them out. It it it's a challenge. It it really is because we have to, it's where we've always been. It's weighing the benefits and it's that seesaw approach that you move to to one side of the seesaw, it helps in one way. It 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 helps from the health and health and safety standpoint, but it takes away from the educational component. You move to the pure educational component, then it it increases the risks of of health and safety. And finding that balance right now with with numbers, we're pretty consistent about 500. Our positivity rates in in our community at Crafton and Carnegie and Rosman Farms, they are high, but there I'm also not sure about how many people are actually going out and getting tested. So we do have higher positivity rates. But there again, do we know how many people are actually getting being tested as well? So that makes it a challenge.
One quick, one quick point I want to highlight is the the trade offs that we're we're struggling with for those families that have young kids and especially if they have multiple parents working. That's a that's a big challenge and a big burden on that community. We've heard from those parents as as how that is extremely difficult for for them to pull that off. For parents who are concerned about their child safety and the macro conditions that exist, they can keep their children home and that that can give them a sense of comfort and safety, but it also reduces their educational benefit. I think everybody agrees that the in-person education is is more impactful than than remote education. So the doctor or director O'Brien, you raised the point about if it's at 50% attendance, is that the threshold that we begin to go full remote? And I don't know the answer to that, but I think it's an interesting question because for some families whose kids are in school now in person and who are getting that benefit of of in-person instruction, I would bet that they would vote that if it if it were 10% in the classroom, they would want to keep it that way. On the flip side, our teaching staff is is doing a Herculean effort to try to teach two different ways to two different groups of people and that's tremendously difficult and they, I don't know that they can do that forever. So.
Plus, plus when we add in the coverage issues where, you know, yes, we want in person and in person is best. But is in person best when we have teachers out and we have a sub shortage? So instead of having a teacher in the classroom, you know, my daughter today was one of the the kids in a class that there was no, there was no sub for. So she saw, I think, six teachers today. So yes, in person is better. But if we've got the teacher shortages going on as well because they're out, they're quarantined, they're sick, they're whatever. How good is that in-person model going to be across the board when we're sort of trying to piecemeal together the the coverage, which, I mean, and this is this is not saying, you know, any kind of castigation on the teachers. They get sick too. You know, these things are impacting them too. But yes, in person is better. But in person being taught by a teacher with a lesson plan that is admittedly going to be split now between the kids at home and the kids here, that's that's better than, you know, us having to pull together coverage. So that also, to me, weighs into this low numbers in the building. Plus, we've got teachers out. So some of those in-building classes, we've got multiple teachers coming in and out and having to cover them. And I just, I don't know that there's great educational merit for those kids at that point.
It's not, it doesn't feel sustainable, you know, and 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 something that Dr. Kreider said really resonated with me is you see how we struggle just to get through these meetings. You know, using our laptop and the screen and, you know, the technology isn't working. So if a teacher's in their classroom trying to teach to their laptop because they have kids at home and the kids in class at the same time, I I don't know how long or how effective that can be. So it's, you know, a lot to consider. And and I I would love for us to, you know, for our kids to be in person all the time, you know, I I do, I do think that's the best. And my heart goes out to these these kids who have disengaged and these families who aren't just aren't able to do it. It's a lot of hard choices. Is it better to just go full one way or full the other way? So I I guess we just need to see how the next couple of days play out and what the governor has to say and, you know, maybe the attendance is is the metric that we we should be looking at. I don't know.
Well, I thank the board for for the input. Certainly it helps to to have discussions and and open conversations about the situation that that we're in. As I mentioned, we'll we'll wait for for tomorrow, see what the governor has to say. And then also, just just a reminder, as far as the following the new guidelines from from PDE with the number of cases dictating the move to remote model. Those, as we mentioned before, that we need to have our our community prepared for for quick decisions in regard to our models. And that's something that could have an impact that if if tomorrow morning, we find out that we had several students at at one of our buildings that that tested positive, then that's a that's a quick closure that we have to come up with and notify families from particular buildings. So it is something we do need to be prepared for is some short notice types of decisions. But I think as a district, as a board here, we have remained committed to trying to provide people with as much advance notice as possible. So thank you again for your input.
Any other items in your administrative list? Are you are you good for this evening?
No, we're done for this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to our committee reports, Director Apple, any updates from Parkway West?
Thank you, yeah.
Joe, we can't hear you at home.
Hey, can you guys hear me now?
Great, thank you.
Is that better?
Yes, thanks.
Yeah, yeah. So kind of kind of making the point about the difficulties of of remote education. Anyway, like I said, when you couldn't hear me, I I kind of kept quiet during the discussion because the the comments directors made about our situation, you know, I I'm in agreement with with those comments and and didn't have a whole lot to add to that. But in in terms of Parkway, you know, I think I think in a in a in a larger scale, in some ways, because we have, we have kids from, what is it, total of nine plus four out of the district. So we've got, you know, nine, nine school districts in the jointure and then then four districts, I think, that send some students to our programs. They've been really struggling with with attendance there, even even whenever, you know, they were back to to four days a week. And so the officers, I'm the treasurer of the 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 Joint Operating Committee and the officers met with administrators and the decision was made to go back to fully online there because the idea is that, you know, they just they were having about 69%, I think, was the number of of is the attendance and you know, that 69% of the kids online. So you know, it's it's really difficult for teachers in general to as has been said, to to teach to a an in-person class simultaneously, teach to a an online class. Add to that the 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 possibility that somebody's operating heavy machinery or or a lift in an auto shop or or something like that. And that's a recipe for disaster. So. They've, they've been having some issues with. With instructors. Testing positive or having, having exposure and having a quarantine. And everyone's doing their best. I mean, you know, the teachers who, who had. Who'd been in quarantine were teaching from home online. So. It, it's a tough situation and, and you know, with career education, it's, it's really, really important. To, to have the hands-on sort of. Thing, you know, to, to learn those skills and, and. So the decision was made to, to get back online. We're going to reevaluate that. On the 14th. And, and see if things have changed significantly as far as. You know, staffing and, and. Case counts and things like that, but. They're, they're kind of in the same boat we are. I mean. You know, it's, it's a really difficult situation because. I think, I think I saw online or not online on the radio the other day. Kind of a national survey and, and talking about kids who. Who are engaged in, in, you know, whether they're in person or online. They're, they're doing, they're doing pretty well. You know, comparative to, to what they were before. And it's, there's other kids who, for, for whatever reason, aren't able to, to engage or checked out and things like that. They're, they're going to be. You know, they're going to have a lot more trouble and, and, and have, have a lot of ground to make up. And, you know, I. I know that, that our, our, our administrators are thinking about this. But, you know, I, I really do believe personally that. I think what we're looking at is, is. You know, some sort of mitigation. Like tutoring or even, even. Even having, having classes in the summer for kids to bring up the speed because. You know, the way these things are going, we're really falling behind or some of the kids are falling behind and. I don't think there's anybody in the education community who, who finds that to be an acceptable situation. So. You know, the other thing that, that. Is really frustrating. I, I know talking with Darby Copeland out at Parkway is that. Whenever there's a, an exposure or a case that is brought in. It's on the staff at the school. To contact trace. And he said, you know. That can take the better part of a day for somebody and, and, and I know with you folks here. It's the same situation. It's not like you can farm it out to the county or whatever. And, you know, it's, it's. It's just a really frustrating situation and, and I, I hand it to you folks who are. Teaching, who are in the administration and trying to make all this work. So. With that, I'll shut up. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Apple. Director Hunschar, any updates for Pathfinder?
Jim, I was not available that evening. So Chris Simsek represented Carleton.
Yes. So yes, I did attend a Zoom, Zoom meeting for Pathfinder on November 18th. We, they talked about renting out their facility. Cause you know, that's, that's part of their revenue is to rent it out to outside groups and they're currently obviously not doing that. So, you know, they're going to continue the policy of not renting out the facility. And, and revisit that in the first quarter 2021. So far they've lost about $5,000 in rental income. Because of that situation. They talked about their current expenditures compared to last year flat. All outstanding facility projects are complete or will be complete over the holiday break. So that was an HVAC project and roof repair. The principal reported enrollment at 84 students and expects an increase to 85 after the holiday break. He also talked about a risk of co-mingling students on buses. So they have. You know, kids coming from different places and being dropped off at different schools even like, if they're coming from one district, that district might drop them. Students off at several different locations. And he said, that's a bigger cause for spreading COVID. So they did have a situation. Where a student contract, there was an issue on a bus. And they wound up having to shut down a classroom. And, and one of the things that he mentioned at Pathfinder is they can't have staff out. You know, they have to have all their staff there to stay open and continue running. So they were, they were closed for a little while. They, they're back to full-time. In-person learning currently, or at least they were as of the 18th. I don't know. If there have been any changes since. So that, that was, that was about it.
Thank you, Director Simsek. For Shazda, Director Zlutsky, I believe last time you said there had not been a meeting and there won't be one until 2021. Is that still accurate?
That's still the plan. Yes.
All right. Any other updates from you then?
No.
Okay. Thanks. Legislative PSBA. Dr. Director Simsek.
I, I really don't have anything new on the legislative front. I mean, there, there, there was that. That piece of legislation, that bill to protect liability protection for. Public entities that went to Governor Wolf's desk and he vetoed it. You know, so that's, that's the last I heard of that. I don't really have a whole lot new to add with the holidays and everything. So. I can't talk about PS, PSBA of, I'm sorry, but. I was going to go onto the foundation. I was already, I was already on the next subject. Just looking real quick. Okay. Yeah. So foundation, we're going to meet on January 5th. And Director Pushkar is going to, I think, attend with, she's been invited. So. There's, there's, we haven't met. We haven't had an opportunity to meet and we don't have any projects happening right now for the foundation. But again, if anybody. You know, through the holidays, if they feel generous, want to donate, you can do so on the foundation website. So that's it.
Thank you, Director Simsek, and thank you, Director Pushkar for offering to join. In the foundation effort. Thank you. Any questions from any board member on committees? If not, we'll move on then. Under section four miscellaneous, there are. Two different items. I'll entertain a motion to approve number one. The revised district, revised district health and safety plan for chronic school district as submitted. And then number two, the revisions to the athletics and activities, health and safety plan as submitted. I have a motion for those two items. Moved and seconded. Thank you very much. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, nay? Motion carries. Thank you. Under section five finance, we have five items. I'll entertain a motion to approve number one, the bills for the month of November 2020 in the amount of $671,553.98. Number two. The memorandum of understanding between the district and the Allegheny intermediate unit in regards to a contractual agreement with TransPerfect Remote Interpreting Services. For non-English speaking parents and families beginning February 10th, 2021. To February 10th, 2022. Number three. The acknowledgement. Or to approve and acknowledge the administrator's completion and submission of the district's annual financial report for the school year 2019, 2020. To the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Number four, the athletic fund report for the month of November with an ending balance of $3,821.61. Number five, the activities fund report for the month ending in November with the ending balance of $84,342.81. So I have a motion for those five items.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you very much. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, nay? Motion carries. Thank you. Under section six personnel, we have seven items. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Number one. The additions to the 2020, 2021 athletic supplemental list with new and returning sponsors. The stipend for supplemental position holders is contingent upon completion of the full school year. And will be prorated in the event of a shortened or canceled season due to unforeseen circumstances. Number two. The 2020, 2021 curriculum supplemental list for department heads as submitted. For the second semester of the 2020, 2021 school year. The stipend for supplemental position holders is contingent upon completion of the full school year. And will be prorated in the event of a shortened or canceled year due to unforeseen circumstances. Number three. Toward a temporary professional employee contract to Jennifer Light. For the position of elementary music teacher. Effective January 4th, 2021 and consistent with the terms of the CFT collective bargaining unit agreement. Number four, to approve Jane Carr for the position of cafeteria worker at the junior senior high school. Effective December 9th, 2020 and consistent with the terms of the SCA collective bargaining unit agreement. Number five. To prove the recall from furlough of paraprofessional Jane Corral effective December 7th, 2020. And consistent with the terms of the SCA collective bargaining unit agreement. And number six. The leaves of absence per the fam, family first coronavirus response act as submitted. Number seven. The contracts for confidential employees Kristen Butler, Renee Fling and Michelle Herman as submitted. Do I have a motion for those seven items under section six?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, nay? Motion carries. Thank you. Section seven, student activities. We just have one item. I'll entertain a motion to approve the gymnastics agreement between the district. And All-Star Athletics and Gymnastics for independent student gymnastic Asia Gardner. For the 2020, 2021 gymnastics season as submitted.
So moved.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussions? If there's no discussion, we can vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries. Thank you. Section eight, old business. Any director of any old business they would like to bring up tonight? If not, move to new business. Any director of any new business they would like to discuss? Moving on to open forum. Anyone in the audience in person or online? Mr. Jones, anyone raising their hand to speak?
Yes, Mr. Wilson, we do have one person that is raising their hand. They have been for some quite time. So I'm not sure if, if they still are wanting to speak or not, but Kim Smith. You are now permitted to speak. I just have to unmute yourself. I'm going to take that as a no. So there are, there's no one wanting to speak at this time. Oh, I take that back. Just the nick of time. Aaron Manifold. You are now permitted to speak. You just unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to speak here at the end of your meetings. I know you guys, you know, said about, you know, what is the parent perspective at this point and. Honestly, I feel like, you know, a few board meetings ago, I raised concern saying that there's two subgroups that I'm concerned with in. You know, this hybrid model and that was the online students and the teachers. And I do think that at this point, both of those subgroups are really suffering. I think that it is just unacceptable to have teachers cover classes at this time because they're doing the jobs of three people. You know, managing the in-person students, managing the online. And then also probably doing cleaning in their classroom on top of it. And to think that they're now not getting their prep periods. I just find it really. Hard to believe. And I know that these teachers are probably doing all of their prep work. First thing in the morning, getting up at the crack of dawn and, and, you know, maybe even like neglecting some of their own families for it. And I just don't think it's fair to them. You know, you guys mentioned how the tech issues affected even this board meeting in a hybrid. Model. And I think that that's probably happening in, in classrooms all over the district where, you know, sound issues are prohibiting students from. Hearing the instruction. You know, in a way that's appropriate. And, you know, I know that there have been times when sound issues have prohibited my daughter from. You know, speaking and, and getting heard in, in her classroom. And so. It, it's, it's been very difficult to, you know, explain to a five-year-old why some of her friends are in the building and, and she's not, you know, we're overly cautious with. With COVID, but I don't know. I just want to kind of bring up the concept of consistency. And I just hope that as you guys move forward in decision-making, you really consider. You know, the, the health and wellbeing of all subgroups of students, you know, teachers included. And also just thinking about the concept of consistency because I think that. Even though the remote model is not ideal for all people, it is consistent. And we were very, very happy with the 100% remote model. And it really provided consistency for the kids, whereas, you know, things now are a little bit more inconsistent and. You know, now we're back to, okay, are we going to be shutting down again? When will we reopen? You know, all this shutting down and reopening. That will most likely occur with the cases, especially based on the chart that you displayed. You know, all consistency is gone. And I think that, you know, kids need consistency above. A lot of things. Yes, they do need the, you know, in-person, but I think that above all, just a consistent model. Would be more effective than one that's going back and forth and back and forth and. You know, I, I know that you guys are basing your decisions on data and I, you know, appreciate everything that you guys are, that, that the entire staff and district is doing. I just, you know, I, I do get concerned about the, on the students that are online in the hybrid model and I. I, I'm really concerned about the teachers, especially after hearing that they're now covering classes as well. So. Thanks for letting me share my opinions with you and thanks for all the hard work that you all are taking on.
Thanks, Ms. Manifold. Mr. Jones, any other comments?
If there is anyone else that would like to speak at this time, you can just indicate that by clicking the hand raising. Button in your Zoom toolbar and we'll acknowledge you.
Okay. Any other board directors have open forum items they would like to discuss? Anyone on the board interested in moving for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? We are adjourned.